Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes.
At this time, is there anyone who'd like to address the board on any agenda items only? And the superintendent's report and recommendations?
Good evening, men and present members of the board. I'd like to recommend approval of the consent agenda items A1 through A5.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes.
Thank you. Tonight's a difficult meeting because of the recommendations to reduce our staff. The recommendations were made carefully and thoughtfully. Due to a sharp decrease in our enrollment and a steady increase of staff over the past few years, it's important to be fiscally responsible to our community taxpayers while making sure our students next year still have a quality and well-rounded education with reasonable class sizes. Since 2015, our enrollment has decreased by 30%, and our staff has been adjusted, has not been adjusted accordingly. Tonight, I am recommending we reduce 9.5 certified positions and three classified positions to be in line with our enrollment. With these recommended staff reductions, our class sizes will remain at 13.5 to 1 at the primary level, 19.5 at the intermediate level, and approximately 15 to 1 at the junior and senior high level. Last year, we offered many electives in which a lot of our class sizes were less than five students. Next year, we are still offering at least two electives in each major discipline. The electives are being chosen by administering a survey to our students to determine their desired electives. We will still be offering the same opportunities in art, music, phys ed, family consumer science, and technology in grades K through 12 that we offered this year. It's important to note that these recommendations will be made whether we were in a transfer, territory transfer talk or not. Are there any questions?
Currently, what, you gave those numbers of 13.5 in elementary. What, where are we at now?
Um, about the same.
Okay, so that's going to stay the same. Um, junior high?
Those remain a little bit higher. The biggest jump probably is in the intermediate 19.5.
Okay. What's the state average normally?
26 to 1. At the intermediate level. Probably 24 to 1 at the elementary level.
And then high school?
26. It's not unusual in high schools to see 30 students in a class.
So we're still well under the state average?
We're still well, which is a positive of guiding this process. It's a positive that we're getting, we're able to guide this process so that we can make sure that the transition in any way that we choose. Any other questions?
So, just out of, I don't know, now is the time to ask, but at the treasures, how much would that save the district?
Um, just for next year, it's approximately $700,000 worth of cuts. And those are cuts, and that's not an overall savings since we do need to look and take into account the open enrollment dollars that we would have to pay out. And I assume we'll address that in our five-year forecast?
Now, just from my knowledge, if, and everybody's knowledge, if for some reason everything with West Jawa falls through and we stay as an independent district and students start coming back, the list is what you hired by, correct?
Correct. You recall from the recall list.
Sarah, how big of an impact does this, I think you know, Maggie just said that we have to see open enrollment dollars, but have you gotten any preliminary of the five-year forecast?
So when I did my October five-year forecast, I was projecting you would end next year at about like a $3.6 million balance. And the way I was working on it a lot yesterday and the way it's looking right now, conservatively, probably around like 4.2 or 4.3 million dollar balance will be ending next year.
Next year will be ending October 11th, because I noticed in the night lines there was the, um, without the renewal.
Right, I mean that's.
We were showing a deficit by 2021.
Right, it'll still show a deficit in 2021 because you'll be missing those real estate payments taking off. So it will still show deficit spending and a steady decline of overall.
But it'll be deficit spending. Will we be out of money by 2021? When will we be out of money?
2023.
So we're basically, according to the night lines, in the same exact boat without putting on the renewals as because of tenders, the night lines had 23 through this way, West Jawa was gonna be going into, into the red also.
Yeah, I think that this is gonna be more of a discussion for five-year forecast.
Right, and I, well, I just, here, what we're doing is, and I, naturally, I'm a conversation.
As a board of what happens, if, if for some reason we were to remain in attendance, there's a lot of ifs, and I think that the night lines was designed.
No, but I guess we're talking about people's livelihoods here.
Sure.
And, and, you know, I hate to say it, but in, especially now with, when everything's going on, we look at, you know, some of our educators as doubts and sense. And, you know, this, this discussion tonight isn't about doubts and sense, and that's why when you look at the backup and what Dr. Hoynes has given us, you know, are, one of the things we've touted as a small district is having small class sizes. And we still have small class sizes. Our educational level, hopefully.
We do have to consider our capital improvement plan, and that's what I'm talking about. I think to go down the road of what we've saved and what this district looks like moving forward. And I think that the board has reacted to those known issues by.
I, I'm focusing mostly on our educators. I mean, we're basically gonna be telling 9.5 people they're losing their jobs and, well, 12.5 people that they're losing their jobs. And, you know, I want them to know that this isn't an easy discuss, this isn't easy, I know it's not easy for you or you or anyone. This is, this is difficult. And no matter how we vote or anything else, what I wanna do, our first, as a board member, our first responsibility is to the education of our students. And then also to the well-being of our staff. Those should be the first two things, because these, people are watching our kids for eight hours, sometimes more of that. I mean, they have a huge impact. If they're miserable and they think that everybody's after them, that's gonna move on to our children. So all I'm saying is, we better have our back straight here in a public forum and discuss certain things. Um, you know, this is, this isn't, this isn't fun. This is, we've had rifts before. This is a large, large rift. This is, you know, just two years ago, I was going through my videos and we had the staff up here dancing with Mr. Jay.
And I gotta say, I agree with you, and I think that we know what could happen if we went down the road of waiting and having those reductions be even greater. And I think that we really should be, I understand that this is not easy to make a decision on, but that we, it could be a lot worse if we were not in control of those reductions.
And if I could just add, it's especially difficult when I work with these people every day, and I was the one telling them, you know, it's very difficult, but we've gone down in students 30%, and we haven't adjusted staff at the same rate. So we're in a position now that I feel like we still have very generous class sizes as, as far as size.
And to reiterate, you said you've already spoken with this, the members who are on the list are already aware and have already been talked to.
Now, just out of curiosity, what's the decline in enrollment percentage-wise in sort of the surrounding districts? Everybody's losing students, but.
Do you know what? I, I can't make up a number, but I also remember, know that surrounding districts have not replaced people through attrition or have done rifts.
I guess, you know.
And they're scheduling at 26 to 1, 28 to 1.
Right. And, and I guess, you know, this year, our teachers have been, they've lost two of their fellow staff members. They've been told, some of them, that they're losing their jobs. And, you know, no matter, no matter how it's done, you know, people have to keep that in mind because they're still coming to work every day and they're still taking care of our kids. That's the important thing. So that's what matters.
And they've been amazing about it. Uh, next on the agenda is a recommendation to approve this year's graduation class. But before I do that, I'd like to thank Mrs. Vandermaas and Mrs. Leibl for all their work on this year's prom. I'd also like to compliment our students who attended Friday night. They were just fabulous and fun to watch. It was a great event. I'd also like to thank the Black Knight parents for planning an outstanding after-prom. Talking to the students today, they said it was like the best after-prom ever. So thanks to everybody that organized that. With that being said, I'd like to recommend approval of the 2019 graduation list for Newbury Local Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a recommendation to approve the 2019-20 junior high school course catalog.
So moved.
Second.
Just to clarify, when, the catalog looks very similar to last year's, but when you were speaking earlier, you were saying we were going down on the list. So is, once the children make their selections, then, okay.
Exactly.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to recommend approval of the 2019-20 senior high school course catalog.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item B5 is a recommendation to approve the certified negotiated agreement to go into effect July 1st through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes.
Next is a recommendation to approve the classified negotiated agreement also to go into effect July 1st through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Can I just say quickly too that the ease and swift with which everybody worked together to pull that done, it's not unnoticed. Well, thank you to the staff that worked on it and the administration that worked on it. Got tied up so quickly for everyone.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes.
I'd also like to echo that sentiment and thank our union negotiating teams for being just so professional and open-minded and willing to work hard during negotiations. Um, next on tonight's agenda are some presentations. Mrs. Matthews, do you have?
I do not have an update today.
Okay. Mrs. Sanders, do you have a Black Knight parents' report?
Okay. Um, we had wet layouts this week, and it has a tendency to live up to its name. It ran both days, I believe. The kids K through 5 enjoyed their hands-on experience learning the comeback critters of Giotta County, Giotta Park District, and the Giotta Soil and Water Conservation Program. So thank you to them. And a huge thank you to Renee Shop for pouring in the whole event, lining up the volunteers, providing lunch for anyone that was there. Randy Cushing has some wonderful things planned off for our staff and teachers this week, which I believe started with continental breakfast for you guys this morning. I think it was fruit yogurt, rye, muffins, and goodies that I saw. I am hearing rumors of lunch tomorrow and a snack cart and massages. So if you can't find Michael Shaking, your lunch is probably third time in buying for him. Anyway, so, but thank you to Randy and the many moms that donated the time and let you get some products in. And thanks for coordinating those perks for the well-deserved teachers. And our end of the year party, which has a carnival theme this year, is planned for May 24th, which is the last day of school. The K through 5 classes will each enjoy some time in the bounce house. So thank you for the school, school board for that, along with some games, prizes, popcorn. The carnival will then continue from 3:00 to 4:30 so that parents and ladies, family members can come and enjoy a little extra playtime with their friends and festivities. And thank you to Dana Pavick and her, her crew for making arrangements and planning this. It's gonna be, really nice, nice time. Last but not the least, we had our after-prom Friday night from midnight about 3:00 AM. We had about 90-ish students under date enjoying Play CLE, which is an indoor venue with roller coasters, raft walls, and lines, lots of potentials for hip breaking. So I stayed on the ground, two feet, the whole night. Um, we had a few sheet pizzas to eat, as well as the ever-popular Chipotle that was served. And there was a chocolate fountain in which everything, all of a sudden, was there to dip into. Prizes and games, our prizes and gift cards were plentiful, and we definitely knew we had a successful trip. And those leaving the school were, were slow-moving and juvie-eyed and very quiet at 4:00 AM. Of course, that was Mr. Shaking was forky of, the kids, the kids too, they were there pre-pooped. So wish accomplished. And thanks to Mr. Shaking, Mr. Forky of Chaperone, and thanks to the three bus drivers that stayed up all night. And I'm sure that there's chocolate on the steering wheel of the buses because they enjoyed that chocolate fountain. But they got us there safely, there and back. So thank you to them. Um, we did do a donation to the academic team to cover the cost of some of their museum entrance fees while they were on their national trip this weekend.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do. I know the teachers are looking forward to this week and after-prom and carnival. Thanks for everything. Mr. Sedaby, report from Auburn first.
Yes, there are a couple of students from Newbury that attend Auburn that have received some honors. The first one was Aaron Justice, who was a gold medal winner at state for the Skills USA competition. And Caleb Grubbs tied for first place in applied math for culinary management. Caleb will be going to Nationals, which are in Anaheim, California, to compete with, with the others. And we are currently busy raising money to help him with his trip because going to Anaheim, California is not a cheap proposition. Uh, and also, since we are coming to the end of the year, we have our completion ceremony for Auburn. It's Wednesday, May 22nd. It's at 12:15 to 1:30, and then there's reception from 1:30 to 2:00. The location is at Lakeland Community College in their Athletic and Fitness Center. So if anybody's interested, I can give them more information on that.
Thank you. Next, representing NEA tonight is Mrs. Carrie Ingle.
My name is Carrie Ingle, and I am the Newbury Education Association Secretary, representing both certified and classified staff. At the March 5th, 2018 quarter, our labor relations consultant from OEA, Anne Thomas, stood before you asking for our association to be included in any territory transfer talks. You were ignored and not included in any of the discussions. Almost a full year later, in January of 2019, our staff met individually with Dr. Hoynes to discuss our future with the district. At that time, approximately 87% of the staff were told that they would not have jobs in the 2020-21 school year due to the territory transfers with West Jawa. On February 15th, OEA attorney Ira Mergan, representing the Newbury Local School District employees, sent a letter to Dr. Mark Clark, the superintendent of West Jawa Schools, discussing the conditions that had been proposed to the supposed territory transfer between Newbury and West Jawa. These conditions, as I stated, would have, leave approximately 87% of our Newbury employees unemployed. Dr. Mark Clark's response was that the West Jawa School Board has not insisted on any layoffs of Newbury employees. Any decisions involving a layoff of employees of the Newbury Local School District would be made by that board of education, meaning Newbury's board. The letter also states that the territory transfer goes, if it goes through, it would be done without any conditions by then. The Ohio Revised Code 3319.18 states, "If an entire school district is transferred to any other district, the teachers in such districts or school employees on continuing contracts immediately prior to the transfer have continuing service status in the newly created district." Do you plan on reducing your staff to the number stated prior to meetings as conditions from West Jawa Schools? The West Jawa Superintendent has rescinded those conditions in the territory transfer. Will you follow the law and protect your employees by merging senior U.S. for all of the 2019-20 employees? We have heard from both our superintendent and West Jawa's, but still have been left in the dark fire of our own school board. In fact, since the new school board has been elected, they have never once met with our staff to update us or collaborate with us in any way. You have stated that you have started a transition plan for our students. Therefore, we assume that you have a transition plan for our staff? Specifically, what is it? We are aware that the board does not have to answer our questions at this time. However, we are asking the board to respond to our questions in writing by Monday, May 13th. We look forward to having your questions answered from our own school board since you are responsible for making all these decisions regarding our hard-working, dedicated staff. I have included our NEA president and our OEA labor relations representative email. Is Sarah asking for it?
Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Ingle. I would like to respond that we did have guidance from your rep representative to say that our board should not be approaching your, the teachers directly. So that's.
And that was at a public meeting that is on record.
Thank you.
Same here, Anne Thomas. You asked us to go through our superintendent to the staff. And that's what we've done because that's what the union has asked us to do.
Even beforehand.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Ingle. Men and present members of the board, I'd like to recommend approval of personnel agenda items C1 through C14.
I would like to make the motion to table this. Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
This, this are a decision.
This is a discussion.
So moved. Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Oops, Dave.
Mr. Sed, Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
No.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes.
Agenda item C15 is a recommendation to accept the resignation of Mr. Brian Keating effective June 30th, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes.
Thank you, men and women members of the board. I'd like to recommend suspending the contracts of personnel listed under C16 until we determine the availability of funds.
So moved.
Second.
Is this, this is sort of a global, right? Just so everybody understands that, that this is set officially.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Semkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes.
Um, it is with great difficulty to recommend to suspend the contracts of licensed staff members listed under C17 due to reduction in force for the 2019-20 school year effective June 30th, 2019, for financial reasons and decreased student enrollment.
So moved.
Second. I wanted to thank you for your service of the postteachers on that list. Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
No.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes.
I'd also like to thank our teachers for your outstanding service and commitment to the Newbury students and continue to offer them support as they are interviewing and looking for your jobs. It is also with great difficulty to recommend to suspend the contracts of the classified staff members listed under C18 due to a reduction in force for the 2019-20 school year effective June 30th, 2019 for financial reasons and decreased student enrollment.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
Again, another thank you to those staff members.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes. I'm so nervous. Okay, also thank you to our staff members and offer them a great support. Um, it is also with difficulty to recommend to suspend the contract of an administrative staff members listed under C19 due to a reduction in force for the 2019-20 school year effective June 30th, 2019 for financial reasons and decreased student enrollment.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
There's something. Rick has been incredible in his time there. Like a lot of people, I mean, he was, it was like planting a diamond in the rock. He helped Anthony tremendously. Um, you know, the life of an AD isn't always, you're always at the school and everything else, and we know that. And appreciate Anthony, but we appreciate Rick because he offered a whole ton of skill set. And he complimented our staff. And it's been a pleasure to get to know Rick.
Always positive. Always positive people. Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
No.
Mrs. Zoff?
Yes.
Agenda item C20 is a motion to approve a one-year contract for the supervisors listed for next school year with a salary increase comparable to the bargaining unit numbers.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Semkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zoff?
Next is a recommendation to approve the issuance of a salary notice for the 2019-20 school year to the confidential employees. to the confidential employees listed under C twenty-one with salary increases comparable to the bargaining unit numbers.
So moved.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Simpkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zock?
Yes.
And finally, it's a recommendation to approve the issuance of continuing contracts to the staff members listed under C twenty-two.
So moved.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Simpkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zock?
Yes.
And that concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
Mrs. Gollum, would you please share your reports and recommendations with us?
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to recommend the approval of the April two thousand and nineteen financials.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Simpkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zock?
Yes.
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to recommend the motion to approve the growing students in science program through the Holden Agorita for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year for a cost of one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars.
So moved.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Simpkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zock? Madam President, members of the board, I would like to recommend the approval of the contract with Public School Works for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Is there a motion? So moved.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Simpkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zock?
Yes.
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to recommend, um, the contact with the aligned school district service agreement between Newbury Board of Education and the Geogee County Educational Service Center Governing Board for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Simpkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zock?
Yes.
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to recommend the approval of the contract with the Geogee County Educational Service Center for extended school year tuition, July ninth, two thousand and nineteen, through July twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, for the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Simpkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zock?
Yes.
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to recommend a motion to approve the inter-agency agreement between Newbury Local School District and Cardinal Local School District. Um, this is for, uh, St. Helen's Title One money. They are basically renewing that for renewed intervention specialist services effective October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, through June fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, for the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and one dollars. And this is retroactive, as we have, um, already received those funds.
So moved.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sedaby?
Yes.
Mr. Simpkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Zock?
Thank you, Mrs. Gollum. Board of Education report and recommendations under a territory transfer update. Um, our administration and the West Yawga's administration have been working closely um, in the past week or so, uh, making plans for our students to transition uh, with the West Yawga students. Um, so I think in the next, I think the week of, uh, May twentieth, the junior high and the ninth graders are going to get together and have lunch. And they've invited, um, some of our students to, uh, do the behind-the-scenes booth at the fair with them. So, uh, those are some of the developments in the transition plans and I know that they're going to continue to be pretty frequently to continue those transition plans, as we've been told.
When's, when are the two boards going to come together? And they start about that?
Well, I think the West Yawga is planning to, um, they're planning to, to vote, uh, coming soon in June, right? Uh, and then the ESC is going to be on July.
I mean, we already know our vote and we also know our voice in power and so is everyone. It's all up to the ESC. Wouldn't it be nice just, uh, get together in the same room with the same two boards, two full boards?
Sure. I think, um, we've recommended in this last step before. I don't know that that, the time has been appropriate for that yet. Um, but I'll continue to, um, put that on the radar and, and make plans for that as we move forward. Is there something specific that you'd like to discuss in those meetings or did you just?
I mean, you know, when we did the consolidation talks with Berkshire, we had any, before anybody voted on anything, we had four or five joint meetings where the, you know, I know this is a different, this is a territory transfer, but there's nothing we can at least meet therefore and, and talk about this.
All right. Okay. Anything else on the territory transfer update? Any questions? Any comments? Okay. Is there any unfinished business to pump for the board? If not, we'll run a new business. Any unfinished business? Is there anyone that would like to address the board on any subjects unrelated to the agenda? Okay. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.